Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our September 19th Webster Board of Education meeting. Would you please stand and join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge is to substitute the life of the student in the state for their own, to be published, to win, to publish, and to deliver the message.
Board members, may we have a motion, please, to move out of executive session? Second. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. You've had a chance, board members, to take a look at the agenda for tonight. Are there any alterations or changes to the agenda? All right. Thank you. May we have a motion, then, to accept the agenda as written? Thank you. There's a second by Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We provide, at this time, an opportunity for visitors to speak to the Board of Education. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the Board tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to our liaisons. Well, I see we have four tonight, so Josh and Lorenzo, since you're the expert, so to speak, you want to introduce us to your...
Yes, this is Mary Charlton. She's a sophomore at Thomas.
Wow.
I'm Mary.
Hello.
And then this is Lindsay Fayette. She is a junior at Schrader.
Welcome, Lindsay.
Yep, welcome. Thomas Schrader wants to start.
Good evening, Board members. I hope everyone had a great summer and has been enjoying the first few weeks of the school year. I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to come back and present to you what's going on at Thomas. It is my pleasure to have Mary joining us this year. Moving forward, as we end the third week of school, everything is in full motion at Thomas. Since our students now know their schedules, it is time for parents to familiarize themselves with our schedules. Teachers are preparing to meet with families on Thursday, October 3rd, for our annual open house. It's a fun Thomas tradition where our parents experience that deer-in-the-headlight look as they try to locate our next class. As stated in our weekly newsletter, the faculty of Webster-Thomas spends a great deal of time building relationships with our students' families. This includes a breakfast with the principal at our students' homes. Mr. Whidore, accompanied by a teacher, school counselor, and assistant principal, will visit your home for a casual meal before school if you should like to make an appointment. Many of our clubs are already in full swing, including the Gay-Straight Alliance, the Thomas Hammers, which is our Habitat for Humanity club, Math League, the Video Game Club, and the Speech and Debate Club. Our show choir has also begun rehearsing for the Fame Competition that will take place in Lincoln Center in New York City this March. They will be traveling there and will face off against nine other show choirs, and the winner will go on to a Chicago international competition. We wish them the best of luck. In the athletic department, our girls' swim team started off their season with a great win against Gates-Chilei. Leading the way were junior Christina Poznick and sophomore Mia Kleisner. Both the boys and girls cross-country teams opened their season Tuesday by sweeping a five-team meet. Seniors Kevin Witt, Keith Johnson, and Josh Goldstein, along with sophomore Nick Niemtow, took four of the first five places in the race. The field hockey team beat Hilton Wednesday night, two to zero. We congratulate all of our teams on their stellar performances this week. Our students are excited to begin a new and prosperous year at Thomas. With much in store, it looks like it's going to be a spectacular year. Mary and I look forward to sharing with you all that happens at Webster-Thomas this year. Are there any questions I can answer for the Board at this time?
Thank you, Lorenzo. Josh?
Good evening, Board members. My name is Josh Hill, and I'm a senior this year at Schrader and very glad to be serving as one of the student liaisons again this year.
I'm Lindsay Fayette, and I am a junior at Schrader.
Over the summer, our Executive Council helped set up a Twitter along with our administrative team to help keep students, teachers, parents, and the rest of our community up to date with the happenings of Schrader. We hope you will follow us by searching the at symbol Schrader HS on Twitter and following us to make sure that you stay up to date as well. This year, we have 550-plus students enrolled in AP courses planning to administer 1,112 tests in May. On August 26th, our link crew leaders gathered in our cafeteria to help finishing up the planning of the activities for the freshman orientation, which took place the following day, on the 27th, in the gymnasium. About 90 percent of the incoming class attended this wonderful event, as well as many new transfer students this year. To excite the freshmen even more on their upcoming four years at Schrader, our link crew, along with our new leadership class, have planned a kickball tournament on September 27th at 6:00 PM on the turf. Following this event, our key club has planned to camp out in our courtyards to help out some of the many causes it supports throughout this year.
Five students from our choir were chosen to represent the New York State and the American Choral Directors Association All Eastern Division High School Choir. Claire Bechers, Michaela Donovan, Tim Height, Ben Miller, and Tommy Rector were chosen last spring out of the Northeast Region, and they will attend a four-day choral conference in Baltimore, Maryland this February. Schrader held a club fair in the cafeteria during lunches on September 12th and 13th. This gave students an opportunity to sign up and receive information about what they can do at Schrader. Our new anti-bullying club has been organized to help students focus on respecting all students at Schrader. They have set up a display outside of Mr. McBride's office for all students to see. Junior Alyssa Sutherland received the Rochester Business Ethics Scholarship based on an essay she wrote in Human Resources Management. And on October 8th, the Invisible Children Organization will be returning to Schrader to present information on conflicts in Africa, and will talk to individual classes and students. The leadership class will get a special presentation in the morning, and volunteers from that class will be helping the group to present to the sophomores later that day.
Our speech and debate team this year grew by over 20 members, bringing our total team count to 44, which is our largest single team since 1985. And finally, our fall sports are in full swing, with our teams truly showing their warrior pride. Our girls' tennis team is 5-1 so far, girls' soccer, 5-1-1, boys' soccer, 5-0-1, field hockey, 4-1, girls' volleyball, 6-1, and our football team, 1-1, with a game against Gates-Chilei at Gates tomorrow night. We encourage all community members to come out to any of our sporting events throughout the year and join our student-run Warrior Crew, which helps fill the stands to cheer on our teams. I hope you all enjoyed your summers and are just as excited as all Webster students for this new school year and all the opportunities it will bring. Thank you.
Thank you, students.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate our new members of the student liaisons, and we look forward to more reports as we get through the year. Thank you.
We move on with our liaison reports. I do not see WTA unless Steve wants to say, no. Okay. And I don't see PTSA either. Well, we'll move on. You know, one of our district goals is to create an environment that is safe, caring, and respectful of all. And we have today seven exemplary students who epitomize this principal belief. And it's great to see a number of our retired teachers here, because this is part of the Retired Teachers Association Award. So, Mr. Pratt, would you like to come up and tell us a little bit more about these praiseworthy individuals?
This committee is the Webster Retired Educators Association, and our committee is made up of myself, Maureen Johnson, Dennis Kuhn, Jack Yingo (raise your hand, he's in the back), and Andy David, who will be coming in later. This is the 11th year of this Retired Educators Award, and it brings a number of winners to 77 for the award, which we started in the year 2003. Each year, a fifth grader in each elementary school is selected based on the characteristics of service, scholarship, leadership, and sportsmanship. Thank you to Adele, Board of Education, and the building principals for allowing this award to continue. And thanks to the fifth-grade teachers and special teachers in each building for their assistance in the selection process. Their selections over the years have proved to be excellent. The selected students have gone on to excel in academics, sports, and the arts. This year, two former winners were given granted full athletic scholarships. Also, thank you to Cindy Cushman and to Jen Callis for their help in doing this. And we will do this in order of schools, starting with DeWitt Road. And after we are done, all the students, parents, siblings, family, and anybody else are invited down to the downstairs fry cafeteria. As you go down the stairs, you go to your right, and there'll be cake and ice cream, which Adele always wants to come to, but never makes it.
I know. Have to save me some.
Ready?
Yes.
All right. Renee Tally, is she here? Would you stand up, please, Renee?
Do you want her to come up by you?
Oh, yeah. Want them to come up? Come up here. That'd be good. Hello. Renee Tally was chosen as DeWitt's Citizenship Award winner for consistently demonstrating integrity and responsibility. She has a strong sense of justice and does not hesitate to act when she knows she can make a difference. When it comes to schoolwork, Renee goes above and beyond on all assignments. As a leader, she solicits the ideas of others and validates their thoughts. She is involved in orchestra, intramurals, and art club, and is a library helper. Renee's compassion and curiosity inspire the same in others, students and adults alike. Congratulations, Renee. Would you like them to stay up here or to go back, as they're called?
I think as they come up and you read about them, they should be here. That would be nice. And then, our Board President has something for each winner, too, and then they can sit down.
Who's next? Which school?
This is really special, because I'm going to read the attributes for two of the students who were in schools where I was once a teacher. So, Plank South, Arianna Gates, and Clem North, Kaitlyn Parsons. So, Arianna, if you'll come forward, we'll get to meet you. And before I start, I have to publicly thank Bill McKenzie for acting in my place on Flag Day when I was unable to attend the presentation. So, I called Bill, and he was happy to do that, and so, for tonight, I get to meet Arianna for the first time, which is really very, very special. Arianna Gates is Plank South's award winner because she is an example of a good citizen in and out of the classroom. She is kind-hearted and hard-working. In school, she has served as a safety, a flag bearer, and a member of the post office. Outside of school, she is an active member of Girl Scouts, where she has participated in a wide variety of community service projects. Arianna has also worked incredibly hard over five years of participating in the Jump Rope for Heart to raise $2,255 for the American Heart Association. Congratulations, Arianna.
Ryan Chevcek was chosen Clem South's Citizenship Award winner because he shows care on a daily basis to fellow classmates and adults alike. He is dependable and conscientious in his work. Ryan plays sports and participates in orchestra, Battle of the Books, Science Buddies Club, and Student Council. He takes this leadership seriously, following through with sharing his knowledge and expertise with his classmates. He also volunteers at the school book fair. Congratulations, Ryan.
As Dennis Kuhn said, I finished my career at Plank North, and David Peter was there, done. As Plank North's winner, Russell Harrison is reliable, responsible, respectful, and extremely kind to his peers and teachers. He's a self-motivated student who challenges himself daily. He enjoys learning, which is evident in his willingness to pursue independent study. Russell is a true leader, and many of his classmates turn to him for guidance and advice. He is a member of the fifth-grade band, the fifth-grade choir, and outdoor safety patrol. He also participated in the Plank North Learning Showcase, PTSA writing program, the Xerox Structures Competition. Outside of school, he volunteers as a bell ringer for Salvation Army and plays baseball. Congratulations.
Kind, thoughtful, active, and helpful are a few ways to describe Kaitlyn Parsons, Clem North's winner. She consistently shows exemplary behavior in the classroom, is hard-working, is helpful to others, serves as a role model, and is a quality leader. She is always willing to give her time, and this year helped the PTSA fundraiser for the fifth-grade Challenger Field Trip. Kaitlyn plays in the Clem North Band, and outside of school, she is busy with two softball teams, quilting, and volunteer work. Congratulations, Kaitlyn.
Leah Kowalski is Slagel's winner because she effortlessly demonstrates exemplary behavior on a consistent basis. She is conscientious, goes above and beyond to produce quality work, and leads by example. She makes herself available to help with classroom responsibilities whenever possible, including coming to class during lunchtime so she can organize papers or help with grading. She is a member of the orchestra, chorus, art club, and intramurals, and participates in school safety, girls-on-the-run, and K-Kids. Outside of school, she is involved in dance, violin, and summer soccer. Congratulations.
Would Julia Cook from State Road come up, please? I already met Julia, because State is my liaison school. I taught there, oh, for a few years, ending in 1974.
You didn't retire in '74.
I didn't retire in '74, yeah. I taught in a number of other Webster schools since then. As State's winner, Julia Cook is a respected role model to her peers. She is a kind and compassionate friend to all, and makes it her responsibility to make everyone feel welcome. Besides being an excellent student, she is a member of the school's safety patrol, post office, and fifth-grade chorus, and is a kindergarten bus buddy and a care ambassador for her fifth-grade classroom. Julia has also been in K-Kids since first grade and actively participates in monthly community service projects. Outside of school, she is involved in dance, basketball, and softball. She also plans to be a youth leader in her church's Bible camp this summer. That would have been this past summer. Would you do that? Congratulations, Julia.
Now, we shall proceed to our little reception downstairs.
Congratulations, students.
Thank you, Craig, Maureen, Dennis, and Jack. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent examples of caring students.
You really should have a board representative down there.
Did you want to go down?
Right. Yes. They need to be sort of...
One thing the Board of Education wants for our students is to have the best teacher possible in every classroom. And one of our core beliefs is continuous improvement. And this belief is not intended only for our students, but for our faculty and staff as well. And one of the ways we meet this expectation is through the strategy of professional development. It's important for our faculty and staff to continually expand their knowledge and skills to implement the best educational practices, which in turn addresses the student's learning and achievement. So, I believe we're going to have Brian Shelley and a few others are going to come up and help explain how we realize our professional development. Good evening.
It is my pleasure to introduce you to some of the members of our Professional Learning Center Steering Committee. My name's Kate Hasla. I'm an enrichment specialist and chairperson of our policy board. This is Carolyn Tinsley, Director of our Professional Learning Center; Shelley Cahoon, Assistant Superintendent for People's Services; Brian Neenan, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction; and Steven Teriano, President of our Webster Teachers Association. We begin our report tonight with this image you see on the board here. This is a Wordle, which is a word cloud, and how it works is it's comprised of adjectives that our teachers used to describe our most recent Superintendent's Conference Day of Professional Learning. The largest words are those that occurred most often in the teacher's reflections, while the words that are smaller appeared less frequently. We believe this image is indicative of our achievement, our obstacle, and our grit with regards to the current state of our professional learning in Webster. As we know, Webster's core belief in collaboration says, "We are smarter and stronger together." Our educators selected that word collaborative most often, which we believe showcases our highlighted achievement, transformational collaboration. We take pride in this strength in Webster, and we recognize that since the inception of our professional learning communities a number of years ago, we have grown tremendously in this regard. The presence of the word overwhelming reminds us that our challenge is to continue to be productive in our work, another word that came up quite frequently, without it becoming an overload. Many of the other words included, such as rigorous, challenging, thought-provoking, purposeful, speak to that grit that we know is inherent in our work, especially when our teachers are actively involved in their own professional growth. So, this evening's presentation is framed by research from Learning Forward and the New York State Professional Learning Standards. Learning Forward is the premier international center for professional learning. Throughout this presentation, Learning Forward's professional learning standards will serve as our frame. The seven standards are listed on the slide that you can see. You will notice that throughout our presentation, each standard begins with the same stem, professional learning that increases educator effectiveness and results for all students. Embedded within this frame are highlighted quotes showcasing some of the highly effective indicators from New York State's impactful professional development rubric. Our presentation outcome is to connect these frameworks to the ongoing job-embedded professional learning that occurs daily in Webster. We will share how this research impacts all professional learning, and then highlight it with one example, creative collaborations.
We know that when our professional learning communities operate with shared responsibility for attaining excellence, are committed to continuous improvement through exploration and innovation, exchange ideas openly and in trust, and stay student-focused, collaboration becomes transformative. Transformational collaboration is our highlighted achievement, and it occurs daily in Webster in our PLCs. Each Webster educator participates in at least one learning community. Many participate in more than one. Every teacher in the district engaged in a recommitment to our professional learning community work on our opening day. Our focused recommitment to live our core beliefs through our PLCs this year will support our learning communities to engage in effective professional learning every day so that all students achieve.
Professional learning that increases educator effectiveness and results for all students aligns its outcomes with educator performance and student curriculum standards. We know when systems increase the expectations for all students by demanding high, equitable outcomes, the expectations for professional learning increase as well. Setting our intended outcomes for professional learning is a process that involves aligning the priority areas for our district with the learning needs of our colleagues to enhance student achievement. This slide represents the four categories that we have identified to prioritize for this school year. These categories align with the region's reform agenda. We've also narrowed the focus to target specific areas of learning within each of these four areas. For example, within the framework of teaching, we will dedicate time, K-12, learning deeply about certain components within that framework, such as Domain 3, Component D, which deals with assessment.
Professional learning that increases educator effectiveness and results for students requires the involvement of skillful leaders. These leaders develop capacity, advocate, and create support systems. The graphic depicts the PLC at the center of a web of leadership, including teacher leaders, administrative leadership, and our Board of Education goals.
And this year, the Board of Education has specifically named cultivating student leadership as a priority for our school year. The Webster Professional Learning Center recognizes the importance of cultivating teacher leadership as well. There are many opportunities for individuals and groups to lead learning from all assignments within our school system. It is our firm belief that every educator has the potential to be an instructional leader, and it is our responsibility to support the development of these many voices. Teacher leadership and teacher voice are incredibly important in our system.
The next standard is learning designs. Here, we're talking about professional learning experiences that integrate theories, research, and models of human learning to attain the desired outcomes. As educators, we frequently attend to designing learning for students that is targeted just beyond their independent reach. We then provide the guidance, support, and prompting to help them achieve those goals. In this process, our students experience a state of supported cognitive struggle. It is this struggle that truly leads to deeper understanding and transferable learning. We desire the same thing to happen for our educators. We need our professional learning to be designed such that it will engage teachers in meaningful, supported tasks aimed at rigorous outcomes. To do this, we are embedding strategies and protocols from several sources, including those shown on the slide, Powerful Designs by Louise Easton, and Making Thinking Visible by Ron Rickart, at all levels of our system. Embedding these protocols and practices into our professional learning has two important implications. First, it allows teachers and administrators to the chance to experience these protocols as students themselves before they put them into action in the classroom or observe them. The routines are modeled, and teachers can reflect on their experiences when making choices about how to use them with their students. Second, the routines engage our adult learners in the very same kinds of deep, active learning that we are requiring of our students. To teach the common core, we need to live the common core. We need to immerse ourselves deeply in this work.
Professional learning that increases educator effectiveness and results for all students supplies research on change and sustains support for implementation for professional learning for long-term change. This year, we have designed a K-12 learning plan, and it is an elementary and secondary learning plan for our 1213 professional learning for all staff. The purpose of these plans is to have a shared understanding of the professional learning needed to support the Board of Education goals and to cultivate the grit and the growth in our... but also the teacher voice, in the faculty meetings and curriculum meetings, and also that we are, like Kate was referring to earlier, modeling our common core instruction for our staff members.
Professional learning that increases educator effectiveness and results for all students requires prioritizing, monitoring, and coordinating resources for educator learning. How our resources are allocated for professional learning affects its quality and results. When we think about resources available to us, the categories include human, fiscal, technology, and time. We would like to highlight two of these resources for you this evening. We are fortunate in Webster to have a wealth of human resources, instructional leaders with powerful expertise and networks. To bring the most progressive research and information to our Webster community, from our superintendent to directors, administrators, and teachers, each voice is heard and valued. We respect and we use their expertise and the information that they gain from their collective resources to create, implement, and evaluate our professional learning. Fiscal resources are essential to supporting ongoing job-embedded professional learning. The Learning Center Policy Board is currently stewards of two funding resources. As you see on the slide, we apply yearly for and have been awarded the Competitive New York State Teacher Center Grant. We also manage Webster's contractual funds, which are earmarked for professional learning. Each funding source has a set of rules which guide expenditures. The Learning Center Policy Board, whose membership includes all district stakeholders, reviews professional learning needs to make the most fiscally responsible decisions regarding both of those resources. Multiple sources are used to collect professional learning data, which supports informing next steps in our planning. Our overarching system is the Windcap Web Professional Learning Module. We collect and report professional learning hours to the New York State Teach System. This module also houses our professional learning catalogs where educators can register for professional learning offerings, as well as input their own professional learning hours from learning experience they're actively engaged in on a daily basis. With each entry, there is an evaluation, which is specifically designed to align to the type of learning experience being addressed, also aligning to the framework for professional practice. Data is collected, reports are generated based on the participant's reflection to inform facilitators, as well as the Learning Center Policy Board, of our next steps.
The seven standards for professional learning are the overarching principles that guide our work. We will now take you through each standard in action as we share Creative Collaborations, a specific professional learning opportunity for Webster teachers. Earlier, we shared that every Webster educator participates in at least one learning community. Typically, this would be their grade level or content area PLC. Some Webster teachers also choose to participate in a Creative Collaboration learning community. These teams can be extensions of the work within daily PLCs, or they can be composed of a variety of educators. As listed on the slide, Creative Collaboration teams can be multidisciplinary, content or grade-level-specific, vertically-aligned teams, or cross-building teams. Creative Collaboration projects are examples of authentic action research driven by one or more of the following: common core learning standards, domains and components of the framework for professional practice, and the data inquiry process. Teachers submit a proposal outlining both the intended learning outcomes for teachers, as well as intended learning outcomes for students. The example on the slide shows an interdisciplinary team who will be integrating multiple common core learning standards to develop a summative performance assessment. It includes student learning outcomes, the example being the ability to formulate and defend a convincing argument.
As we mentioned earlier, cultivating multiple opportunities for teacher leadership is a goal for the Webster Professional Learning Center Policy Board. Our policy board representatives act in leadership roles in supporting the Creative Collaboration projects within their different buildings. They provide a face-to-face communication between the teaching teams and the Learning Center. Within each team's commitment to shared responsibility, any participant can also emerge as a leader. We have seen how some members of Creative Collaboration teams have brought learning from other experiences to their teams, thus sharing learning from other environments, such as workshops and department meetings, with their Creative Collaboration teammates. Continuary directors, building administrators, Carolyn and myself, all guide and support the group's action research throughout their four phases of implementation.
Thanks, Kate. The action research learning design for Creative Collaborations was intentional in our planning, and each phase mirrors the cycle of continuous improvement. Phase one is focused on planning and professional learning. So in this phase, teams are going to identify and engage in the professional learning and planning. They think about, what does my team need to learn and to do in order to help students achieve the desired learning outcomes? They decide, how long is this going to take? They then actively start participating in collaborative learning, researching, reading, and discussing their topic, their question, whatever wondering they've posed for their creative collaboration. In Phase Two, they take their learning and implement it into their classrooms. They continue to meet collaboratively during the phase, they discuss and reflect on their experiences and their learning, they begin to analyze the student work, the instructional strategies, and the formative assessment. Phase Two flows right into Phase Three, which is the assessment, evaluation, and the data analysis. During and following implementation, evidence of learning is collected and analyzed. Teams have time to meet, to discuss trends and evidence, with an emphasis on looking at student work, analyzing instructional strategies, and student learning outcomes. Phase Four is a celebration and a culmination of sharing, and teams share their findings with like or appropriate colleagues so that they can share their findings. We also on our website list all of the Creative Collaboration teams, their designated members, and the work that they're doing. And Kate and I take the opportunity to meet with each team, and we introduce teams to each other so that they can share their work if it's similar. Thank you.
Resources. Our policy board continues to support the Creative Collaborations through allocations of resources in our budget. Creative Collaboration proposals are submitted on a rolling basis, and we're proud to have met our targeted goal for participation for this year. As of September 1st, we have encumbered 23 new projects involving 93 members of our teaching staff, totaling 2,576 hours of work outside of the school day. We're very pleased to have met this goal so early in the year, and to know that teachers are increasingly taking advantage of this wonderful opportunity to support their professional growth. We collect a variety of student, educator, and systems data to evaluate our Creative Collaborations. One piece of systems data includes analyzing the distribution of projects among grade levels and content area departments. This year, we have a wide variety of teachers pursuing projects. We use this data to connect similar projects across the district, as Carolyn was referring to earlier, and to set goals for future participation. We collect student and educator data primarily through our participant reflection logs. Each time the groups meet, they submit a log that includes reflections on teacher and student outcomes. The reflection logs indicate which phase of implementation, Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, or Phase Four, the project is currently engaged with, and allow the policy board members to connect with and offer support to the teams. Finally, each individual participant submits a final reflection. This allows each individual educator to reflect on his or her personal growth through the experience.
Wrong slide, I think, but okay. Returning to our highlighted achievement, which is transformational collaboration, our obstacle, which is a sense of feeling overwhelmed, and our grit, the rigor, challenge, and persistence in our daily work, we close with a reflection written by one of our teachers about change. "I used to think that this would be a mountain to struggle over. Now I think we are being valued and respected and trusted to help each other. We can do it together. It is overwhelming, but there is a strong sense of collaboration and communication which makes it seem okay."
Thanks, Steve. And before we entertain questions from the board, we would like to share a celebration. We are very pleased to share that Webster has been selected to host the AP College Board Middle Region One Day Fall Institute. Educators from the Northeast and Middle Regions of our country are invited to attend this professional learning experience on Saturday, November 9th at Willink Middle School. Subjects being offered are Biology, Calculus AB; Chemistry, Physics B; Spanish Language and Culture, and US History. The last two offerings are new to the one-day institute design and were developed collaboratively by Webster and the AP College Board. Pre-AP Strategies and History in the Social Sciences, and Pre-AP Math Strategies and Mathematics, Developing Algebraic Thinking. These last two classes focus on thinking and strategy skills for students far before they would be a part of an AP classroom, and it's just great instruction. So this is our kickoff week for advertising this institute, and for those of you watching, please go to the AP College Board website for additional details and registration. So now at this time, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to take them.
Time, we'll start with you.
Thank you for the report. Well-prepared, excellently presented, and I appreciate the activity that you're seeing, especially in things that we in business can really wrap around, which is the assess plan to verify. It speaks loudly in here what you do with the students through the teacher work together in the collaboration efforts. So thank you very much, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Excellent report. Kate, are you controlling the slides? Can you go back to a slide that talks about board goals? I think Shelley may have been talking about it, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I just thought that was a real, real important statement. While she's looking for that slide, it had to talk about, it talks about the board goals that we set as a board, and we put a lot of time into that. And what that slide talked about was how the Teacher Center works with the teachers to get those board goals implemented, which I think is important. You set a goal, we're not going to make that work for you. You're going to do that, and I'm very thankful for that support. The other thing I want to emphasize is the world is changing constantly. Kids are changing, education is changing, and to be a successful teacher, to improve on the art and the science and your craft, they need that professional support, you're providing that to them. So thank you for all the work that you do on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul.
Thanks. Yes, I'll second and third there. Notion, it was a great report. Thank you. And I would like to think that last year will be the last overwhelming year, because I know there's a lot that took place in New York State and a lot of the common core going on. So hopefully, we feel a little bit more settled this year. I think a lot of people in education, I was talking with people here today, that it's been a very smooth start to the year, and a lot of that goes to the staff development and getting them going throughout the last year and this summer. So thank you for organizing the K-12 umbrella of staff development.
You're welcome.
Yeah, ditto on the quality in the presentation, it's very good. I also liked the fact that the learning is consistent, as well as individualized, you know, so there's a certain level that everybody's going to get, and then there's certain things that are individualized based on what you're doing in the classroom. So I think that's really good. I did want to ask a question about the phase. Phase one through four, how long would that process take?
So when a group of educators decide they want to participate in action research and realize that these educators can be cross-building, cross-discipline, cross-grade levels, they come together, and the timeline can be no less than six months, but no longer than 12 months.
Okay.
And then they are each allotted up to 28 individual hours of research and implementation outside of the school day. They can choose how many hours they would like to participate.
Okay. And this goes to their requirements for professional development? There's state requirements, correct?
For educators who hold a professional certificate, they have five years to accrue 175 hours of professional learning, which is uploaded into the Teach System. So this action research project definitely qualifies.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
TV's Project Runways, Tim Gunn, has a signature saying.
What could it be?
That I'm going to say to you, as our Professional Development Committee, make it work, people. Make it work. This does need action. May we have a motion to accept the Professional Development Report, please?
I'll make that motion.
May we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Very insightful report. Make it work. I like it.
All right, Adele, I'm sure you've got a nice report for us.
I do. And I'd like to start tonight by, tonight's report by saluting the academic excellence of three Webster High School seniors. Congratulations to Zachary Lyons of Webster Schrader, and Carson and Celine Klasner of Webster Thomas High School. All three were recently honored as National Merit Scholarship Program semifinalists. Now Zach, Carson, and Celine were among 16,000 semifinalists named by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation in the 59th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. This is across the country, all of our high schools. About 90% of the semifinalists are expected to attain finalist standing, and more than half of the finalists go on to win a National Merit Scholarship, earning the Merit Scholar title. There's $35 million in National Merit Scholarships to be offered to students in the spring of 2014, so best of luck to all three students as they move forward, and hopefully, they'll be taking home some of that scholarship money for their futures. We're very Webster proud of their achievements. And speaking of being proud, I'd like to congratulate the pride of Webster, Webster's own marching band. Last weekend, the band traveled to Cicero North Syracuse High School to perform with several area marching bands and took home the first-place trophy. So we are very proud of them. You see on the screen their website, and we'll all have an opportunity to see the marching band in action during Webster's Homecoming Parade on Saturday, October 19th. That's always a great community-wide event, followed later that day by the annual Autumn Fan Fair at Webster Schrader High School. So there's a record 14 bands, I understand, in the Autumn Fan Fair this year, so for a full listing of all the marching bands' upcoming performances, you see that website on the screen, webstermarchingband.org, and if you're interested, you can go to that. It's just a great family event to go hear a marching band, and lots of excitement and pride in that. I want to pass on a brief reminder to our elementary school families. The Webster Central School District, we've introduced a new interactive toolkit for families of students in our elementary schools. And I know, as there's so much to learn at the beginning of the year, and if you're a new parent to the elementary schools, that overwhelming word can happen, so what we did is we put this interactive guide online, and it overviews many facets of learning that our students will be engaging in throughout the day. There's a video introduction, it's currently featured on the district's homepage page in the Video On Demand section, which we are showing you now at websterschools.org. And we're sure that it's going to be informative and useful to our families, lots of links that you can click on. There's QR codes if you get the hard copy, we're handing those out at curriculum nights, so we really want information at parents' fingertips, and we're very excited to be introducing that new tool to our families. Finally, I did go on a learning walk today at State Road Elementary School with Principal Christine Abley and Assistant Principal Mr. Bodensteiner, along with Assistant Superintendent Mr. Neenan, and we were walking through classrooms, and we were focusing on the primary classrooms, so kindergarten. And I know, as there's so much to learn at the beginning of the year, and if you're a new parent to the elementary schools, that overwhelming word can happen. So, what we did is we put this interactive guide online, and it overviews many facets of learning that our students will be engaging in throughout the day. There's a video introduction. It's currently featured on the district's homepage page in the Video On Demand section, which we are showing you now at websterschools.org. And we're sure that it's gonna be informative and useful to our families, lots of links that you can click on. There's QR codes if you get the hard copy. We're handing those out at curriculum nights. So, we really want information at parents' fingertips, and we're very excited to be introducing that new tool to our families. Finally, I did go on a learning walk today at State Road Elementary School with Principal Christine Abley and Assistant Principal Mr. Bodensteiner, along with Assistant Superintendent Mr. Nenin. And we were walking through classrooms, and we were focusing on the primary classrooms, so kindergarten and first grade, and watching reading instruction. And we were sitting down, listening to students read, looking in their book boxes, having them explain it to us, looking at the different activities, and just having a wonderful time being in the classrooms. And the two teachers had these wonderful signs in their classrooms, so I just want to give them a shout-out tonight. Mrs. Johansson and Mrs. Freeland, State Road, had this sign about stamina. And it was clear that the students, it was a very prominent sign, and it said, "Stamina is doing anything for a long period of time without getting tired or giving up." And if we think about that, that was in first-grade classrooms, but you know, we could all use that kind of stamina, where we just kinda hang in there, and we do what we need to do for long periods of time without getting tired or giving up. And then another little encouragement in that classroom that I thought was really, it was connected exactly to our opening-day messages of growth mindset and grit, was the definition of mistakes. So, there's a big sign that kinda caught your eye, saying mistakes, and then the definition was, "Mistakes are proof that you are trying." So, it just said encouragement to try, fail, learn, and that's how we learn sometimes. You gotta go out there, and you gotta take some risks, and you gotta try. So, mistakes are proof that you are trying. Great wisdom from State Road classrooms to share to end my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Adele. We'll move on to board business, and I'll be looking to my left a lot now. The New York State School Boards Association's conference allows us to have one voting delegate. And we need to select that delegate tonight. Now, that means you'll be going into a meeting with all the other schools and districts that are there, and you'll be voting on the various resolutions. And we, if you haven't received it already, you should've got it in your email, all the resolutions that are out there. And we will probably have a board meeting before the conference to allow the board to discuss the resolutions, and you'll get an opinion of it. So, we are looking for any volunteers before we actually start twisting hands and arms and legs for a voting delegate. I will actually volunteer to be an alternate.
For those of you who've never been to a meeting, it's, I would say they're about three hours now, Tom?
Tom did his last year in an hour and a half.
One and a half hours.
Well, Tom is presiding again.
Back in the day, that some of those meetings would last five and six hours.
And long. My first one had a lunch and a dinner break.
Yeah. So, they can be brutal. But the resolutions that you're voting on are items that we want New York State School Board Association to promote for, on behalf of our schools.
Yeah, they had the advocacy vote put together for the Senate, any of the Senate.
Tradition has the younger board members usually get delegated, but we don't want to.
Right.
Oh, we don't know, well. Paula Fritz, volunteering?
I was supposed to do it last year, and as you know, there was a really, really good reason why I couldn't.
There might be a game this year, too.
If you would like me to do it, I can. Hopefully, there'll be another good reason why I can't do it.
I guess I'm going.
If you want to put me down.
Okay, thank you, Fritz.
I'm happy to fill in as well.
Okay.
You can be number 1-0. You know, we could split it or something, too.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on. That was easy. Paul, next year. This is the first time that I can recall that the Board of Education is adopting goals for themselves. Now, earlier in the year, the Board of Education approved district goals. Now, the district goals are objectives that everyone in the district works on. We want everyone striving for academic excellence. We want everyone to be part of creating a safe, caring, respectful environment, and we want everyone in the district to be fiscally responsible. But these goals, however, are objectives that the seven of us will be working on. And for our audience, we have three main goals that we'd like to work on. The Board of Education would like to develop a more positive and more effective communication process with all our stakeholders. The Board of Education would also like to support the development of our strategic plan as it is implemented to the district's mission, vision, and core beliefs. And finally, the Board of Education would like to continue to promote the strong governance team with the superintendent, with the executive cabinets, and the district. So, those are our three main goals, and we thought it would be a really good idea to do this publicly, because then it gives some validity to these goals, and it also makes us accountable for these goals. So, is there any, actually, I need to ask, can we have a motion to accept, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second. Any discussion? No one wants to comment on these?
I know we spent, I know we spent a good day-plus just looking it over and discussing and fine-tuning a lot of it. And with the presentation earlier about collaboration coming up, I think the board was in some serious collaboration together, along with Adele, and I'm really proud of what came out of that workshop, so. And I think it's pretty simple and straightforward and achievable.
Kinda like SMART goals.
Kinda like SMART goals. I didn't really spell it that way.
Any other discussion?
What will be some of the points that the board will do to show that we are actually working against those goals?
Well, we do have an action plan, and I think it was sent to you. Some of the things would be like conducting community learning and community discussion forums. It could be re-analyzing the, or analyzing the resurvey from our strategic plan and seeing possible ways that we could identify desired academic strategic outcomes. There's inviting community leaders to some of our school events. Those are various things that could be action plans under those items.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of these goals?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, Jim, we are looking at some money situations, and the first one is the Kohl's tax surceery.
Yes, tonight in front of you, you have a resolution that's been prepared by your attorney for the proposed settlement on the Kohl's property. For the Article 7s from the years 2008 through 2013, this agreement settles all claims and holds the assessment that's been settled here for three years, beyond 2013. There'll be a refund of taxes that we will have to pay to Kohl's, just about $200,000, and that will come out of our tax surceery reserve that we have set aside. I recommend approval of the board.
Any questions from the board?
Jim, I want to thank you and Adele for getting our legal team involved, which I think helped move this along. In the past, we weren't as engaged. It was good to get ourselves re-engaged in these actions and brought about, I think, a fair settlement.
Thank you.
Motion to accept the tax surceery? I don't think it's a real call.
No, no.
Thank you, second. Thank you, Janine. All in favor? Motion passes. I think I do.
The clerk signs. District clerk.
Oh, okay.
The treasures report, Jim.
Tonight, you have the treasures report for the month of August. During the month of August, we had receipts of just over about $5.7 million. Most of that money that was coming in was in the form of sales tax, which was accrued back to the previous school year. A portion of that would be revenue coming into this current 13, 14 school year. The others accrued revenues due from other funds, due to other funds. Those transactions were transfers amongst the different funds, like the general funds to the federal fund, to the capital fund. But the transactions for the month, $5.7 million, the balance in the general funds at the end of August, just over $37 million, including our reserves. On page two, you have the balances of school lunch, federal, capital, and trusted agency, which show you the receipts and dispersments for the month. Page three is the summary of our investments. Our investments are very similar to what you've seen in the past. I won't tell you they're very strong investments, because right now, the interest rates are very low, and with the Fed's action two days ago, I don't see interest rates going up anytime soon, as they drop the interest rate again. Answer any questions the board might have about the August treasures report?
Seeing no questions, may we have a motion to accept the August treasures report? Thank you, second. Thank you, all in favor? Motion carries. Moving on to old business, we need to untable the international trip. Can we have a motion to untable? Thank you. And Sue, seconds. All right, the board was, had some questions, both legally and contractually, about this. They were answered in the executive session today. So, we are looking for a motion to approve this trip. Thank you, second. Thank you. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We now move on to the school liaison reports. Paul, we'll start with you. Do you have anything?
I do. Over at Plank South, they have a couple of curriculum nights coming up. The first PTSA meeting this year will be next week on September 25th at 7:00, and a literacy night on October 3rd, and they're gearing up, they're sharing a lot of Gold Care coupons.
Thank you, Paul. Fritz, anything?
Yep, I do. DeWitt Road is doing a coupon book fundraiser, and the fundraiser ends Monday, September 23rd, so please have all your orders and money turned in. And if you choose not to sell, please return the sample book. Also, they're gonna be starting a box-top collection. That collection date will start happening in October, so look at the next newsletter for more information.
Thank you. Tom?
State Road will be having its first PTSA meeting on the 23rd, this coming Monday, and school pictures will be on Wednesday, the 25th.
Thank you. And Sue?
Schlegel Road had their first PTSA meeting last Tuesday night. It was great to see so many people in attendance. They're planning their fundraisers for the year to help support their special events, which includes movie nights, Patriot Party, visiting author, field trips, and staff appreciation.
Thank you. Plank South will be having a PTSA meeting this coming Monday night, September 23rd at 7:00 in the school library. We encourage all to become members of the PTSA, and if you have a child at Plank South, please attend the PTSA meeting on Monday. Sue, do you have anything on the steering committee?
Sure how many people are aware of this, but to get PTSA newsletters through the email, it's very, very easy. You just have to go to websterschools.org, and then you can click on the school that you want to receive that newsletter for. You can click on the link, and it's real, real simple. I just did it a couple days ago, so just wanted to pass that on.
Thank you, Fritz. Good information. Now, we'll go back to you, Sue.
The next steering committee is October 30th.
Thank you. Short and sweet. Tom, do you have anything on legislative, or is it Sue?
Sue, I was not able to attend.
Yeah, and I gave the report at the last meeting. And our next meeting is October 2nd.
Okay. The Labor Relations Committee met yesterday, and they decided on the topics of interest for the coming year. They include recent trends and benefits for all staff. They're looking at healthcare updates and the effect of the Affordable Care Act on schools. They want to look at best practices and how to approach units during negotiations that have little to bargain with. They're also looking at negotiations and the effect that the teacher and principal APPR scores have on a district. Information met earlier, and their committee decided on these topics. They are very interested in how schools will generate interest in STEM. And I gotta smile here, because guess who said steam? Let's make it steam instead of stem. They're looking at school. You can't have STEM without steam. School law concerning the opting out on the state test. They're also looking at best practices concerning social media, particularly with bring-your-own devices. They're looking at the pros and cons of the APPR implementation. And finally, they want to look at the impact and the implication that schools have found with opting out of the federal nutritional program. And that's it for the information, and labor.
Is there any discussion, might I ask, like, on information exchange about Alec? American Legislative Exchange.
Here's what happened. Many, it was brought up, but information exchange is where usually new board members wind up being for the first time, and many of the people that were in attendance didn't know anything about it, even though it was a topic. You know, it was my first choice, but.
Fair. Thank you.
It probably, if I was smart, I would've brought it up at labor, because that maybe, although it doesn't really fit.
We're trying to get legislative priorities set at the national level, and that's where it's starting to pick up steam. And we're just a little bit nervous about what it could do to local boards of education and minimizing.
Do you want to explain to our listening public what that's all about?
I'm still learning about it myself, but there is some organizations backed by some big money that's trying to take the public out of public schools, basically, and become more and more set up through private industry and things of that nature. And if we don't start to stand up as a combined group and increase our voice, you never know what some of those big check writers could do in Washington, and then it trickles down to the state level. So, it's something we need to keep our eye on.
I did bring it up to the executive board, but I only heard back from Jody so far.
Okay. I think as we, as this becomes more and more popular and understood more, and the effect it could have on public education, I think more people will want to take some action and try to stem that a little bit.
We do have an executive committee meeting coming up, and maybe that'll be a point of conversation there. Tom, do you have anything to report on the New York State School Boards?
Oh, yes. We had a conversation, a roundtable, with the commissioner on the 13th. There were 25, 20, 25 or 26 folks in attendance from around the state. There's going to be a follow-up on the 24th, where we're having another 50 folks in that weren't able to make the first one. This was done a little bit differently before the area. Directors used to solicit from Kohl's, you know, our Monroe County, four-county school board-type associations, to get one or two people, one from each group or something, to go and to attend. And this time, as part of membership in the New York State School Board Association, Tim Gremer, the executive director, put out an all-call, so went out to just about everybody, the 5,000 members. 77 people responded. Well, this guarantees you that no good deed goes unpunished, because some of the emails were just vicious when people weren't selected, and it was just amazing. So, the commissioner actually said he'd come back and meet with those people that were given a no-letter. And so, that's what this meeting on the 24th, I get to go and try to facilitate some common sense into this, on the 24th with 52 people. So, wish me luck.
Make it work.
I will make it work.
Tom, real quickly, any news on the convention itself? Is it doing well for attendance?
Attendance is about 40 or 50 ahead of last year's signups, so it's looking pretty good. Also, we're hopefully gonna get a big turnout from Area 2, as we did last year. It was very interesting, if I could drop back to the commissioner's discussion. It was somewhat around Common Core, but it was a lot of conversation on consolidation. And he said it again. He didn't mumble it this time, but there was the murmur in the group, he's looking at places like Long Island, where you- where you have 10 districts in the equivalent square miles of Webster. You know, it's just, it's not right to be able to say, you know, why the consolidation there. And if you ever gone on Long Island Expressway, you can see at one exit, six towns named, and you know each one of them as a school district. Yet, they're all off of one exit of the expressway. It's kind of silly sometimes, when you think about it. Not saying the local governance isn't important, but when you have districts of 300 or 400 children, are you really, you know, able to do what you think you can do for them? As you could maybe as a group of 6,000 or 7,000.
And are you efficient?
And are you efficient, right, right. So, we're not sure where the next conversation's going to go on that. And I'll keep you posted on the agenda for the convention. But it looks to be very good, a lot of work's going into it.
Thank you, Tom. Janine, anything on the audit committee? And Sue, anything on policy?
We haven't had our first meeting yet. Great, thank you, Cindy's going to set out some dates for us.
Board members, you've had the opportunity to look at the consent agenda, which consists of the superintendent's recommendations for approval of the personnel actions, recommendations on the Committee on Special Education, recommendations on the Committee on Preschool Special Education. We have another trip, and we have a bid for transportation, and a co-op bids for pool supplies, and bus parts, and gas, and diesel fuel. May we have a motion to accept the consent agenda, please? Second? Thank you, Janine, all in favor of the consent agenda? Motion carries. Just a reminder to the board, we do have an executive session next Thursday, and our next regular scheduled meeting is for Thursday, October 3rd. With that being said, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, all in favor? We are adjourned, good night, everyone.